I'm John Canales Korchinsky with my co-host Jeff Reichman. And welcome to Conversation with the Candidates, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Houston, Education Fund, and Houston Media Source. In this conversation, we will be talking with candidates for Houston City Council at-large, position number two. All candidates for the position were invited to participate, and the candidates present were the ones that responded. Please, we really hope that you enjoy tonight's program, or this program, and I will kick it over to Jeff for an introduction.
Councilmember David Robinson is Houston City Council at-large, position two incumbent. David is an architect who started his own company as a sole practitioner with an emphasis on building large commercial and industrial buildings in 1999. He also teaches a graduate-level course here in Houston for Texas Tech University on planning and development called Infrastructure in the Urban Environment. Along with his architectural practice, David has been actively involved with neighborhood issues. He served eight years as an officer of the Neare Town Association, including a couple of terms as president. He was elected to serve as chairman and president of the citywide Super Neighborhood Alliance to a maximum two-year term that concluded in 2013. In 2007, he was appointed to the City of Houston Planning Commission by Mayor Bill White and reappointed by Mayor Nace Parker in 2009, becoming the first licensed architect to serve the city as commissioner since the 1970s. David Robinson received a BA in architecture from Yale College and earned a Master of Architecture degree from Rice University in 1993. David is the proud father of Elissa, a 15-year-old who attends Lanier Middle School. They are active members of Palmer Memorial Episcopal Church and love living here in the great city of Houston, Texas. Councilmember?
It's great to be with you. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, John.
Welcome. Thank you so much for being here.
It's a pleasure.
We're going to jump right in with the tough stuff: unfunded pension liability.
Right.
It's a major issue for the city of Houston.
Certainly is.
And what are your ideas on how to address the current pension issues? And how would you prevent similar issues from happening in the future?
Well, it's an important question for the city to face right now, and there's been no shortage of discussion at the horseshoe through the first year and a half of my first term here. We're really looking at that in a number of ways, but through the Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee of the City Council. And in this case, we know that we have three pension funds: that of the municipal employees and the police officers, as well as the firefighters. All three of those pensions are important for the reasons you state: ultimate sustainability within the financial budget of the city. And they are, however, unequal in how they are governed and regulated. And I think to get to a position where the city has more fundamental responsibility for how they're operated, in particular with the firefighters, is a very important issue. With legislative control in Austin, that's something that City Council has really been handcuffed with regards to any opportunity to get to the table, to meet and confer in a positive form. I think we do have an excellent relationship with our firefighters, who do such important work for us, as with the police officers and our municipal employees. So we owe it to our employees, and especially those who we've made promises to, to hold our promises as we go forward. But to get to a place where we have more sustainable models, we need to have a really functional government that works with council, with our Austin delegation of elected officials. And in that regard, it is of utmost importance that we have open dialogue with all parties so the city can be secure in its future, as well as our first defenders and important public servants.
Thank you. So in a city as large as Houston, building and maintaining infrastructure is a real challenge.
True.
Of course. How do you think the city should tackle its infrastructure issues, including we want to know how to pay for it?
Right. Well, I guess I'd be naive if you didn't know a little bit about Rebuild Houston, which is what the drainage fee, as some people, or drainage tax even call it. But what we've been doing to pay down the debt of a fund that pays for infrastructure projects, and really in a transparent way, is a lockbox as we voted as the citizens of Houston in 2010. And now, I think, working into that legacy, that program that is building both road and drainage projects for our city, we need to continue to administrate that program in a way that is transparent, efficient, utilizing all the best technology. I think part of perhaps what I bring to the council is my experience in the public realm and as a practicing architect, some of those details, whether you're a firm believer in complete streets or in studying the floodplain. We know a lot of information about where the most important projects need to go, and we need to be very careful with our money and those tax dollars that are precious to us so that we're good stewards of our resources and spread that around the city in a way that is fair to all parts of town. And as we say in the city, address the worst first. And that's a challenging program. It's something difficult to live up to, but I think we are in the process of getting into our stride. I think the new, relatively new now director of Public Works and Engineering is a good man, and he is administering the program very well. But we can do better, and I think that's something that we are all putting our shoulder to the wheel for.
Okay.
Councilmember, when candidates speak of crime prevention, they often propose a formula of more cops equals less crime. But in reality, the systemic causes of crime are linked to issues of education, of poverty, of opportunity. What crime intervention and prevention policies do you support that will systemically address crime?
Well, I've had the pleasure and the benefit of sitting on the horseshoe next to our former chief of police, CEO Bradford, who has been a wonderful colleague, I think, on the council, as well as someone who has spent a great deal of time developing a program that he calls community policing. And that's something that really speaks to me in the experience that I've had as a neighborhood leader and a community activist, really, in ways that relate to our City of Houston Super Neighborhood Association program. And where I have served as a neighborhood leader, we're familiar in our part of town, as in other parts of Houston, with the PIP program, the Partnership in Crime Prevention. And that is something that we really, we need to engage with HPD. There has been a very well-vetted process of analysis, trying to look carefully at the way that we do our policing right now and what is recommended for going forward. And I think we're taking account of some of those recommendations and trying to implement them. I think you're right to ask the question about whether more cops in cars is going to be the sole solution, but I think we can be smarter and more efficient. And I think in ways that we've seen across the country, there need to be a more open dialogue between citizens in Houston and the police. And I think our chief, McClelland, understands that in principle, and he is moving forward to actuate on that.
So, Councilmember, you mentioned community policing and PIP. And for those that don't know and are watching this, if you could explain what your sense of what those mean and how they would specifically address these systemic issues?
Right. Well, I think, from my experience, a lot can be gained from, in another sense, meeting and conferring. In this case, between our officers and administrators of the police force, as well as our community citizens, getting together in a public forum, in a library or a public space, somewhere where a facility is offered to us, be it in a school or a church. These are places that we can access as public officials. And as an at-large council member, I will tell you that I work with all of the district council members in all 11 of our districts, and that there are different problems in different parts of towns, which is not a surprise. But it's something that suggests that there would not be a one-size-fits-all solution for Houston, and that different types of crime merge and are more prevalent in different parts of town. So we have to be smart about that. I know I just spoke with an officer in his cruiser a few blocks from here, and it's interesting. You get a real sense that they know the territory. And some of those, what we used to call beat cops, you know, they're the boots on the ground, and they know what's going on. I've got great faith in our police officers. I feel I have excellent dialogue with both representatives of the union, as well as the brass in the force. And this is, it's very important for us to link up some of what we do in neighborhood leadership, where citizens can feel empowered. There are, you know, plenty of Houstonians that don't have a computer and rely on their neighbors. And the little lady down the street, the classic example of someone who relies on her community for news and if there is urgent issues that are surrounding us. Many of us are informed by smartphones and internet alerts and advisories, but we've got to, we've got to work on this together. And I think that's part of the PIP model and what community policing can really do if we open it up to the citizens of Houston.
Thank you for expanding on that.
Well, similarly, not everybody has access to the internet, not everybody has a computer, not everybody has a car in Houston either.
That's true.
What is your vision for public transportation and transit as it relates to Houston and kind of what's happening right now?
Well, I am a big believer in public transportation, and I'm happy to say that in a day or two from today, Metro will be unveiling its new, reimagined system network for its bus service, which is really the backbone of our system. It is what we've built on. We have an absolutely efficient park-and-ride system, second to none in the nation. And those things are great for those suburban commuters who are trying to get efficiently into town. It's a very tempting and worthwhile way to save time in the morning and at rush hour in the evening, to get home and get to work in the morning by way of the bus system and some of those high-speed lanes. So expanding on that, I do believe is part of the solution. I am a believer that concrete is not always the solution, and that some intermodal systems, by that we mean the light rail that is coming and I think about to really be a marvelous asset for the city of Houston and something that we can really celebrate as we come up with the Final Four and the Super Bowl coming to town in the next few years. So there's exciting things happening, but I'm a, whether it's bus rapid transit, like what we see that's going to be taking place on the Post Oak Corridor in Uptown, or some of what we're seeing now here in the East End, where the Harrisburg Line and the Southeast Line are accessing some of our universities in a way that I feel that I'm, I think we need to continue to expand that program.
Thank you. Now, because the Houston Equal Rights Ordinance is going to be on the ballot, it's going to be an issue that folks are going to be talking about, and we would like to know, do you support the Houston Equal Rights Ordinance and why or why not?
I do, and I voted for it last summer, and again, just a couple of weeks ago, when it came back to us from the Texas Supreme Court. So I think putting it to the ballot, hopefully, will be, will offer Houston some finality on that. I do think it's of utmost importance that we pass that, lest we find ourselves in some kind of territory like other states where we've been, they've been subject to some embarrassment by their discriminatory and, in some ways, offensive behavior. But I think inclusion, as we've talked about in history, as the arc of history pointing in a direction, I think it's clearly towards inclusion. And it's been pointed out by a number of my colleagues on the horseshoe that there's 16 categories of individuals that are protected under this ordinance, including veterans, pregnant women, the elderly, for issues of age, race, gender, and a variety of other categories. And for all of these reasons, I think we are unique among great American cities, and these are United States, that do not have a similar ordinance. And I think for those reasons, it is time to simply get this thing done and move on. We have a tremendous amount of things that we really need to be focused on and working on. While I feel this is an important thing for us to get through, I think there's other things that we need to be focused on.
With our last few minutes left, and we do want to leave time for you to address the voters directly.
Okay.
But just quickly, with oil prices well below $60 a barrel, many Houstonians are at risk for losing their jobs, and thousands already have.
That's right.
What policies and programs should be in place to protect our city's economy?
Well, I think one thing that we've done in the last few decades, frankly, is diversify our portfolio of solid business performers with the Texas Medical Center, with the transportation hubs of our international airports, and the fantastic evidence and truth behind the Port of Houston. We have a much more diverse portfolio than we did, say, in the '80s, when the oil and gas crisis really came to a head with our much more monolithic culture when we were so focused on petroleum-based products. And now, I think with that diversification, I didn't even mention the Texas Medical Center, largest medical center in the world, we are blessed. You know, Houston is a fantastic place for all of these things. And while you're right, John, the economy is constricting in certain sectors, and we're hoping that the price of oil can turn, and there's some projections that that's going to be heading in the right direction here shortly, I think we need to do everything we can to help manufacturing, to help those who are the job creators out there. As a small business owner, I know that I'm very reliant on the state of our economy here, and I think we need to do very well.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for the conversation. We will give you the last minute to address the voters directly and tell them why they should reelect you to Houston City Council at-large, position two.
Very good. Thanks again for this time with you.
Thank you.
And folks, having served for a little over a year and a half now as your at-large city council member, I'll tell you that it's been a great honor. I have a wonderful staff. I have a great position on the horseshoe, serving you at-large, all 640 square miles of this wonderful city, every neighborhood, every great diverse citizen of the great city of Houston. In this case, I feel it's important to emphasize that I've had two distinct appointments. One is to be the vice chair of the Quality of Life Committee, that has direct responsibility and oversight for the Departments of Planning and Development, Parks and Recreation, the Department of Neighborhoods, Libraries, and the Department of Health and Human Services. And in addition to that, there's one category that's not a department, but it's defined as issues related to culture and international affairs. And in that regard, I am bilingual. I speak Spanish and practice it every day. I think in that regard, I've had the pleasure of meeting a number of our consular ambassadors and the folks that work with international trade. I am a cheerleader, I'm the father of a cheerleader. You did mention that my daughter was at Lanier Middle School. She's actually just finished her freshman year at Lamar High School, but she's taught me a little bit about cheerleading, and I hope I can be your second-term at-large council member, position number two.
Councilmember David Robinson, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
We are going to take a quick break and reset, and we'll be right back with the Welcome back, everyone. We're going to be talking with our next candidate for Houston City Council at-large, position number two, Mr. Andrew Burks. And Jeff, if you could take it away with the introduction.
Andrew Burks is a native Houstonian and grew up in the Third Ward. Andrew has been in the ministry for the past 28 years. He's the president and CEO of AM PM Telephone Service Incorporated, the first African-American-owned telephone interconnect company in Houston. He is highly involved in his community and is a member of several civic clubs, including having served as the president of the 276th Community Club in Southeast Houston and served as the member of the mayor's ministerial advisory board. Andrew Burks studied at Texas Southern University. He is married to Thira L. Burks, and they have three children and four grandchildren. Welcome, Andrew.
Thank you. Thank you. And there's been an increase in the grandchildren.
Oh, there has been.
Now I have a great grandson.
Congratulations.
Yes, yes. I'm spoiling him to death.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful. Well, thank you so much for being here with us tonight. We're going to hop right in with the fun stuff: unfunded pension liability. It is a major issue for the city of Houston. What are your ideas on how to address this issue, the current pension issue, but also, how do you prevent similar situations from happening in the future?
Well, we have to look at right now, on my employment with the city, I'm in what they call Schedule D. That means that I have to put money into my own pension myself. The city does not really do that. And that will probably be the way in which we go for all new employees who are hiring in with the city, that they will, they will have to fall into that category. The police and fire department, the police has done everything they could do to help the pension situation. The employees, city employees, have worked hard to be able to give back so they can keep their pension. I'm for everyone keeping their pension, but I'm also for when city government promises to do something, has an agreement, we honor that. The fire department in itself, did you all know that the average firefighter does not live too long, in other words, their lifespan is short? They are inhaling smoke all the time when they go out on a firefight, fighting position. Their life expectancy is not what it should be. They work three days a week, 24 hours a day at that point, that's their shift, and then they're off for four days. But the idea is, is that their job is totally different from the police department's job altogether. When we are running out of a fire, they're running into it. And you know, we, I had the horrible chance of experiencing, seeing the four firefighters who were killed on Southwest Freeway at the end, that particular day, I rushed over to the hospital where they were and had met and consoled the families, family members of those who lost their lives. And I never will forget Robert B. B.'s family. But it's just that it is one of those things where you never know. The police department, you never know, but the police have weapons on them to kind of counteract those things. But when you talk about a firefighter, he has just a rubber suit on and water and maybe an axe, and it's hard to fight something that doesn't have a physical presence at all, like a fire. So I want the fire department to know that I'm always with them, but I want, what I really want is new firefighters who are coming into the department, that those pensions will be different from the ones who are already there. The ones who are there, they served, and they deserve everything in which they get.
Thank you. In a city as large as Houston, building and maintaining infrastructure is a challenge. How do you think the city should tackle its infrastructure issues? Specifically, we want to know, how do you think we should pay for it?
Well, that's a good question, but I'm going to go off-script right now with that answer to our viewers. One thing what we do not know is, we really don't know the truth about our budgets and the monies, whether in the city. What actually, how much money do we actually have? All of a sudden, the city comes up with monies to do other things, give bonuses to staff members when others are taking days off without pay from the city, because the budget was so bad, we had very little money. Something's wrong with that picture, and it raises, I ask many questions on our quarterly budget reports. Take example, ambulance fees. I know I'm not answering directly your question, but just to give you an example, we're losing millions of dollars in ambulance fees. I voted against raising the ambulance fee from $400 to $1,600. That's what it is now to ride an ambulance. And you have to pay mileage. And you pay for the gloves that they put on and anything else that they give you, you pay for those. Insurance companies are not going to pay $1,600. That leaves a burden on our citizens. When we talk about infrastructure and working and repairing the streets, I don't like the way in which our public works department decides what's worse, figuring what's worse is first. Rebuild Houston was not supposed to be what's to go in this fashion. They're also using some of those dollars from Rebuild Houston for salaries. These are things which the public said no to. We wanted to go to streets. Well, I'm tired of driving down pothole-filled streets. But at the same time, people on one side of town are talking about speedhums. I say, "Speedhums? You speedhump on the major thoroughfare potholes and things, you can actually lose your car in those things." So the way I see it is, we need to first see how much money we really have, and then go to the areas where it is needed. Case in point, there's an economic problem in the city of Houston as far as, this is a roundtable, imagine this, let's say that at the, your end, you have economic great jobs and stores and grocery stores, your area, they have the same, but in the north and south, they don't have that, you see? So why shouldn't there be an economic balance to bring in more business into those areas? You see, that's the way we balance this city out. This diverse city needs to be able to have that economic balance, whereas when you have the economic balance, guess what? The streets get repaired, where money flows into the city. Money in the minority communities are, when people get paid, that money leaves out of those communities to go to other places to shop, and then it comes back. It never comes back into the community. That monies have to stay in those communities. So with infrastructure being in line and in place, we need to make sure our budget is right, have a good comptroller giving us the right numbers, and at the same time, we can adjust and make sure that those streets are repaired, that really needs to be repaired.
That's great. When candidates speak of crime prevention, they often propose a formula of more cops equals less crime, when in reality, crime, there are systemic causes of crime linked to issues of education, of poverty, of opportunity. What crime intervention and prevention policies do you support that will systemically address crime?
I tried to get, and that's a great question, I tried to get the police chief to okay for his officers to have lunch and breakfast when they're off duty or before they go on duty with the children of the communities in which they are, they are serving in. Example, if you begin to have a personal relationship with a child who's growing up, and you have breakfast with them every morning when they get to school, you're eating breakfast with them, you get a chance to know that child. And as the years progress, you see that child grow. If the child was in trouble, you could actually just stop your car and say, "I'm looking at you. How about your grades? What are they like?" You become, is it called neighborhood policing? And neighborhoods are standards on policing. Lee Brown brought that concept in. We've gotten away from that now, and that's what we have to get back to. You see, when a policeman is known, when I was a little boy, I wanted to be a policeman. Then I wanted to be a fireman, you see? But it ends up being because I thought those were honorable and great jobs. Children today don't want to be police. They don't, you ask them, what do you want to be? Anything but a policeman or anything but a firefighter. So we have to get back to those things where the respectability is there. Not only do the police officers eat breakfast, but they have to actually make themselves more convenient to the citizens in the community by patrolling the community, not just the major thoroughfares. That's what I'm looking for.
That's great. And what is your vision for public transportation and transit in general in Houston?
Well, I think that when you begin to look at public transportation in Houston, we have missed the curve. We have HOV lanes in all our fre, on all our freeways. But listen, those HOV lanes were designed for rail to go down it. Why couldn't we put rail in HOV lane and move more people on the freeways in and out of the city? Well, we didn't do that. Why couldn't we elevate rail to a point, whereas we flood a lot, why can't rail be a vehicle that we can actually, in a flood at times, we can get more people out of the flood area by rail being elevated? They said it costs too much. Well, I think we've been spending a lot of money for not getting the right things. Water and electricity do not work well together.
Well, the Supreme Court, having
Well, the Supreme Court having put back onto the Houston City Council the Houston Equal Rights Ordinance, it will be on the ballot whether or not it should stand or it should be repealed. We want to know, do you support the Houston Equal Rights Ordinance and why or why not?
Well, the way it's written, I can't support it, the way it's written. First of all, it was done by executive order by the mayor, and then we went into a 36-page document that included other things and Equal Rights Amendment. I'm for equality for everyone, everyone. I don't want to see discrimination ever. But there are items in this amendment that really bother me. And so, if it bothers me, I can't line item veto those things out at the voting box. I just need, they need to go back and do this over again. The restroom problems that we are looking at and seeing, it's not explained well. That was the executive order from the mayor without council's approval or anything that was done. We were upset with that at the beginning and we're still upset with that now, because the restroom is a very private matter, you know, and it doesn't need to be in politics. When you go into the restroom, you're not there to shake hands. You're there to do whatever you're there to do and get out. Now we have it in the political process, and I think that is wrong. And that's what the biggest argument is with the Equal Rights Amendment, is the restroom.
I think everyone wants to use the restroom in peace and privacy, including all the people protected by the Houston Equal Rights Ordinance. We're going to ask you one last question, and we do want to give you a chance to give an answer to, I mean, give your piece to the voters, so we'll leave a little bit of time at the end for that. But with oil prices well below $60 a barrel, many Houstonians are at risk for losing their jobs, thousands already have. What policies and programs should be in place to protect our city's economy?
Well, I was one of the, I was the author, should I say, of the city of Houston going in and suing BP for the Gulf oil spill when President Obama placed a moratorium on drilling and also fishing in the Gulf. It was one year, we lost a lot of money there. City council passed that, and I was very happy with it. And the other day, you heard, I know, the news, a $19 billion settlement between the five states on the Gulf, Texas included, that they would be compensated for that, and the negotiations are going on right now. When it comes down to oil, we need to be able to maintain what we have. But at the same time, I began to change my driving habits when gasoline was so high, due to the fact that the gasoline was too high. And the prices where they are now, I'm very comfortable with it, because I'm saving money than I was. The people who are working in the oil industry and they are being laid off, that's unfortunate. But at the same time, I do know that we, as a nation, need to be more self-efficient on our oil, not depending on foreign oil to come in. We have enough energy here to take care of our own self. So, it's a six in one hand and half a dozen in the other, the situation here. You're not going to satisfy everyone, but at the same time, we want to make sure that those who are laid off find gainful employment other places. And we need to also work on our education problem, that had been brought up, with the education problem of our kids. In order for me, as a council member at large, trying to get business to come into Houston, that's what we're supposed to do, as large council members, work on economics. When we try to do that, we find that it does not a lot of times happen, because we don't have the skill force to support those companies when they come in. I am tired of being second place behind Austin and San Antonio. Houston is number one.
I think everyone would want Houston to be number one in all the good areas and last place in all the bad areas, right? Well, we are going to give you a minute to tell the voters, you know, why you should be the choice. Speak directly to the voters, let them know why they should vote for you.
Houstonians, I would love to serve another term on city council at your permission, granting me that opportunity. What did I do the first term? Southwest Airlines International Airport, Hobby Airport, that was my lead on that, I led that. And I was very happy to know that 10,000 new jobs will be made, provided for and created because of this new expansion to Southwest and to the Houston area. Another thing too, voters, is that the BP oil industry, we are going to get our share of that, part of that $19 billion, Houston is. Houston needs money. You talked about earlier about the potholes and things of that nature there. Well, here comes some money in which we deserve to get, because we lost money in sales taxes, we lost money as far as our companies who make the pipes and the drilling equipment, they lost money. They laid off a number of people during that time because they couldn't afford it. And I believe that they should be compensated also. So, when you have me on council, you have a person that's working, that's doing what he said he would do. I said we work on jobs, we did that. I said we will work for the small business people, we worked for that. I said we will work for veterans. Now, the mayor has a veterans board there under city government. We have to do more for our veterans who are returning home. We have the largest veteran, second-largest veteran population in the nation, so there's more that we can do. And they are very well-skilled and trained workers. So, I'm asking you all to give me two more years, and after that two more years, and then I'll just go and rest my little head on my pillow here and just know that we did a wonderful job together, because it's about you. And Houston, I want you to know, I have your back.
Thank you very much, Mr. Andrew Burks, for joining us, candidate for at-large position number two. Really appreciate your time. We're going to take a quick break to reset, and we'll be right back with the next candidate. Jordan Cash.
Awesome.
All right. Thank you for joining us. We are back with Mo Rivera, candidate for at-large position two on the Houston City Council. And I'm John Kanalisk Gorchinsky with my co-host Jeff Reichman.
So, Modesto Mo Rivera is a retired lieutenant colonel. He was called for active duty for the Desert Storm and Iraqi Enduring Freedom Wars. Mo currently devotes much of his time volunteering as treasurer for a non-denominational church and is chapter president of a full gospel businessman's ministry. Mo also serves as co-president of the Hispanic Executive Society International in Kingwood, Texas. He has been instrumental in awarding over 30 scholarships of $1,000 each to economically disadvantaged Hispanic students. Mo has served as an accounting supervisor with the Houston airport system, with main duties of managing over 100 service and supply contracts, servicing all three Houston airports. For the past year, he was transferred and assigned to be the purchasing card coordinator for over 125 buyers at all three airports. Mo Rivera graduated from the University of Puerto Rico in 1979 with a BBA in accounting. Mo also graduated in 1991 from the Command and General Staff College in Fort Leavenworth, Kansas, and recently with an MBA from the University of Phoenix Northwest Houston Campus. He is married to the former Inez Del Carmen Rubio and has two daughters, Stephanie Marie, Rebecca Marie, and one grandson, Jordan Cash. Mo, pleasure to be here.
Hey, it's an honor to be here, and I commend you guys for actually taking your time. I know you're not paid, you're doing this on your own penny.
Hey, don't tell them.
Trying to just know more, a little bit more about the candidates that are running for at-large number two.
Well, we're all here because we love our city. And we're going to hop right in with the fun stuff. Unfunded pension liability.
Oh, I love that.
It is a major issue for the city of Houston. What are your ideas on how to address this current pension issues? And how do you suggest we prevent similar situations in the future?
Unfunded pensions comes dear to my heart, and the reason number one is, there's been other cities like Detroit, Sacramento, that have run into problems with that. And what we need to do, number one, we need to honor who's ever earned it, especially the fire police and the police. Why? Because like, for example, the fire department does not have social security. They only have the pension, unless they leave the fire department and then work elsewhere and they could contribute to the social security fund. So, we have to honor the people that have been grandfathered in, we have to do it for them and their families. But thinking outside the box, we have to change the way we do things. Currently, we're going to have to either, from a specific point on, offer a 401 type of matching where the individual actually invests in its own self, or outside the box, go to Austin, ask permission, draw out proposal in Austin for the city to be able to control the pension funds. But not just to have the city council and the mayor control it, no, in conjunction with the board members of all three pension funds. I'm sure if we could sit in a table and we could negotiate, that this pension fund issue can be resolved. I had an idea two years ago when I first ran for at-large number two, is doing the triangle of seven, in which you allow people to invest, or 7% of their pay, just invest in their own pension, contribute 7%. Because like pension for the D pensions, they don't contribute anything. The city, I believe, pays 1.5%, but they don't contribute. I believe if you want something really bad, if you want something for your future, that you want it to be afloat, and if you have to given the option to contribute, that you're allowed to. Number two, the other seven is for the city. The city owes billions of dollars, and I know it's not going to be possible to pay it all at once, but if the city can just start with 7%, start paying 7% of what they owe, and dedicate that for the seven years, within seven years, at 7%, you got 49%. You could pay half of what you owe in the past and keep that pension afloat. And the third part is, let's keep this, a dialogue between the pension fund, municipal fund, fire department, police, and if there's something that they could give and negotiate to make this thing work, do it. That's the only way I believe we could save this. And it's good for the police department, fire department, municipalities. It's not all just one aspect, it's different aspect, and it's a collaboration. But we need to go to Austin, we need to change the way we're doing things, hold on to the people in the past that have earned it, but change things for folks from the future and on out.
Well, sticking with money, but a different way that we spend money. In a city as large as Houston, building and maintaining infrastructure is a challenge. And what do you think the city should do to tackle the infrastructure issues, including how to pay for it?
There is problems in the city of Houston, because there's not enough money to go around to fix every single broken bridge, street, potholes, you name it. Who causes the most damage in the city of Houston? I'm going to tell you what causes the most damage. Those are rigs, 18-wheelers, big vehicles going through streets that are not meant for those streets to handle that much weight. Now, a lot of rig people are going to hate me for this, but why not tack an extra 20, 25 bucks when they register that rig, when they pay, and allocate that money to the different districts? Number one, you're using our streets, you're doing business here, you're making money in our streets, and you're tearing them up. And guess what? The citizens of Houston are having to split the bill. No, I think we should all be responsible. Tack on to the highest and the worst streets amongst the different districts, but let's have these people that have these big, heavyset vehicles also contribute. And I know it's a challenge too, because you're going to have to also go Department of Transportation and negotiate this, and it may be a push and shove, why is Houston doing this? But let me tell you, in other different parts of the world, they do stuff like that, and people just say, they're enamored, they say, "Well, I'm contributing something. I want to maintain our streets, sidewalks." So, it's a way that you have to generate revenue. And in the other way also, you have to allocate wisely the different projects around the city in order to just best serve the citizenship.
So, when candidates speak of crime prevention, they often propose a formula of more cops equals less crime. In reality, the causes of crime are linked to issues of education, issues of poverty, issues of opportunity. What crime intervention and prevention policies do you support that will systemically address crime?
A lot of crime comes from men and women that see that they'll never reach their dreams of being a successful person. And they see that the easy way out through peers is just to take, like Robin Hood did, take from the rich and give to the poor. But that's not the right way of doing things. The right way of doing things is getting educated, is learning a trade, being good at what God-given gifts God has given you. Every single person out there in the streets of Houston, God has given them a gift that they're real good at. They could be dancing, it could be speech, it could be athletic, or they could be natural salesperson. They just need to exploit the talent that they have. But we need mentors. We need mentors that will step up to the plate and help these kids that come from broken families.
So, what things can you do on city council that will help connect, make that connection between those natural talents and preventing crime?
You've got to connect, first of all, don't, let's re-educate people, and let's not, and bring the police force in. They're not our enemy. The police is not our enemy. Let's bring police officers to community centers and let them be also part of the Big Brothers, Big Sisters mentorship program. And they get to know that police officer, they get to know that gentleman that's a businessman, or that minister, or that person with this talent. A lot of people just don't have a mentor, they've never had a dad, they've just had a mom that's worked two or three jobs. Once a person, an individual can identify with a successful man, believe me, it could make a change. So, putting more money in police is not going to change anything. What's going to change is people investing in these communities. And I, this is what I do. I'm not talking this, preaching this, I do this personally. I do it up in Kingwood area, Atascocita, Humble, up in the Intercontinental Airport area. This is what we do. We try to help people that are in disadvantage, raising scholarships for them.
So, on a similar note, especially for people up in those areas, what's your vision for public transportation and for transit in general here in Houston over the next few years?
You know, it would be wonderful if we could have a train that comes from downtown all the way up to the airport, from downtown all the way out to Katy, from downtown all the way out to Clear Lake. But money-wise, it's $100 million per mile in order to do that. But money-wise, it's $100 million per mile in order to do that. Now, an analysis needs to be done, and in conjunction with possible loans, federal government loans, and what is the most transient route? Analyze, what is it, 45? Is it 10? Is it 59? And just tackle that. Just tackle that one area. The parking ride system is perfect, but in order to use a parking ride, you have to have a car. There's places you cannot get here in Houston without a car. I've seen people walking for miles just to get to a parking ride so they could go to downtown. And at times, you know, I just feel sad. I said, this shouldn't be like this. So it could be a combination of just concentrating one rail project for the most intense area, concentrate on that, and then just do the mass transportation using parking rides, but also adding routes where people just don't have the transportation to get to a parking ride or to get to a downtown. Not eliminating buses. Yes, we're going to have to take a hit. We're eliminating buses in poor, black neighborhoods. That is unfair. I know economically it makes sense, but sometimes you've got to set economics aside and help the people out.
Well, the Houston Equal Rights Ordinance is going to be on the ballot this November along with your name. So we want to know, do you support the Houston Equal Rights Ordinance and why or why not?
At the present time, I don't think there's a need for an equal rights ordinance. And I'm going to tell you why. There is so much from the religious community, there is so much like they slapped in the face, there should not be a need for pastors, minister to sue the city of Houston. Spend all this money in attorney's fees because the mayor asked for their sermons. There's no reason for that. I think if we, one another, just treat each other with decency and respect, there shouldn't be, there's no need for an ordinance like that. Just treat people with respect. Look, I can talk to a gay person, a lesbian with respect because they're a human being. I don't condone, and God doesn't condone their sin, but you have to treat them with respect. And here's a problem, when they don't get treated with respect. So if we just instill leaders to treat everybody with respect, there's no need for no ordinance to do anything. Now, if they don't treat themselves with respect and there's a need for an ordinance, so be it. But let's just be fair and honest. Why is this all stemming about? It's stemming about because inequality. It's not just the homosexuals or community. It's also the African-American communities. They feel that they don't get any respect. So it's part of education, it's part of having good leadership and giving that assurance that we're going to be honest with you, we're going to go after this issue, and we're going to do the best for you and your current condition.
Do you believe that it's the job of, say, the pastors to be able to communicate that message of respect in lieu of the Equal Rights Ordinance passing?
Pastors can only have a limited influence. I think it's the parents that need to do that. Parents should teach their children just to respect. I was brought up in a Hispanic culture in Puerto Rico, and, you know, my grandmother, my mother, they would, if they needed to whip me because I was disrespectful to the elder, or if I did something unfair, I got that whipping. Sometimes it's good to get a little whipping. But I believe parents need to be involved in this, not only pastors, ministers. I think it's more like a family and a community issue that we should teach more about respecting one another. So yes, ministers have responsibility, but I think more it's parents.
Well, thank you so much for joining us tonight. We do want to give you an opportunity to make a direct appeal to the voters as to why they should support you for at-large position number two.
I'm Modesto Rivera. I came to this country when I was a year old. I have been a very blessed man. I've earned three degrees while I've been in this country, paid off my home before my 55th birthday. All the cars that I have have been paid off. I've owned a limousine company. I've owned a tax company. And I'm just a little Puerto Rican guy that came here to Texas as soon as possible. I've been blessed with the ability to just do things for others. And when you do things for others, you bless them, and they bless you back. So I want to bless the city of Houston. I want to be a candidate for all of the city of Houston. I want to serve the city of Houston. I'm going to take a pay cut from my current position working at the airport to become an at-council member, but I'm going to put back in the community what this community and this country has given to me. So on November 3rd, please vote, Mo Rivera, at-large position number two. Thanks.
Mo, thank you so much for being here tonight. We really do appreciate your time. I want to remind everyone watching that recordings of this conversation will be available on the League of Women Voters Vimeo site so that you can share the information that you've heard here tonight with your friends, families, neighbors, and remind them about this important election and give them the chance to educate themselves. Other places you can find resources will be vote411.org and Houston.Vote for more information about all the races that are going to be on the ballot this November and all the different things that you will have an opportunity to vote for that you heard about during this program. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, the Houston Area Education Fund, and Houston Media Source, we do want to say thank you so much for joining us tonight. Jeff, would you like to say goodbye?
Goodbye, everybody. Thank you so much for watching.
Thank you, Jeff and John. You've done a wonderful job.
Thanks, Mo. We really appreciate you being here. And to all the candidates that are participating in the League of Women Voters, Candidates in Conversation Series, we do appreciate their time. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan, nonprofit, and our job is to educate the public and let you decide how this election should be decided, not for us to tell you. So we hope that we've done a good job in presenting information and giving candidates a chance to speak for themselves. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.